Damn, how does it feel, man?
I'm chilling.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome, as I called to order, the November workshop of the Escambia County Schools Board. The purpose of this workshop is an open discussion on items brought forward by the board members and the superintendent, and a review of the agenda items for our regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday night. I ask that you silence your cellphones, and if you wish to speak at the public forum, you must complete a speaker request form located at, on the table at the rear of the room, and bring it forward to Ms. Harris, who's kind of moved down the table a little bit, but she's still here. Before I go any further, I'd like to welcome our new board members-elect, Mr. Tom Harrell from District Five, and Ms. Carisha Bregash from District Four. We, the sitting board members and the superintendent, wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to discuss any items on the agenda, and so, as I told both of you, when we get started, if you have questions, just raise your hand, or shout at me, or whatever you need to do to get my attention. And I'm so glad you're here for the workshop, because this is one of my favorite things that we do every month, is we invite one of our workforce academies to come and do a presentation. It educates all of us, and the public can get to see all the amazing things that are happening in our schools. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This afternoon, we're lucky to, or fortunate to have the Pine Forest High School Culinary Academy here. Thank you for the pastries. And Ms. Christina Stanley, make sure I got that name right, is going to introduce the teacher and the students.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Christina Stanley, and I'm one of the Workforce Education Specialists that gets to work with all of the Family and Consumer Science Academies with the district. I want to thank you so much for always allowing us each month to share all of the great things we have going on in workforce. Today, I'm honored to present Pine Forest High School's Culinary Arts Academy. Pine Forest Culinary has a really special place in my heart, because I was the culinary arts teacher there for eight years before I was able to, or honored to get the opportunity to have this position. So I'd like to introduce Chef Black and some of the, or Chef Trent Black, one of the instructors at Pine Forest High School, along with a couple of the students, to share a little bit about the academy.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Trent Black. I'm one of the culinary instructors at Pine Forest High School. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to showcase our amazing program, and thank you also for allowing our students an opportunity to show their experiences and the things that they do that are so amazing. I could spend all day talking and bragging about the program, everything they've done and achieved, but I just want to highlight a few things about the program, and then I'm going to give it to them, because they're what we're here for, right? So last year, we earned over a hundred certifications in the program. We actually have the largest culinary program in the district, and we had fifty program completers. So it's pretty amazing things going on, but I know you are eager to hear from them. How far ado?
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Ooh, that's a good voice.
My name is Darren Henderson. I am a senior, and I am currently in Culinary Arts One. I have my Surf Safe certification as well. In Culinary Arts One, we learn the basics of food safety, basic kitchen essentials, and how to make soups, sauces, and stocks. Also, we are learning about the basics of food science, and how to... How's that? And we're learning about the basic cooking techniques and baking techniques as well. Currently, in Culinary Art One, we are focusing on our NRFSP food safety certification. In Culinary Art One, I've enjoyed learning about, learning, learning about temperature regulation, and how to properly arrange foods, and the finer details of cooking as well. My favorite thing that we've made so far was the white macadamia nut cookie.
Ooh. Ooh.
And after high school, I am planning to attend Pensacola State College for cybersecurity. And the reason why I joined Culinary Arts One is because I believe that cooking, the cooking, is an extremely important staple within anybody's household. There's been countless nights where me and my friends and family decide to come together as one, and create meals, and create memories as well. Also, I believe cooking for someone is a great way to show affection. And one last thing, knowing how to cook is an extremely important life skill as well. Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabriana Prim, and I am a sophomore currently in Culinary Arts Two. I'm working on my Surf Safe and NRFSP certifications. In Culinary Arts Two, we focus on earning the Surf Safe Food Safety Manager Certification. We also learn about the front of the house and back of the house jobs, nutrients, food plating, and presentation, as well as learning about variety of cuisines in the world. In culinary class, I've enjoyed learning how to prepare food in the proper way and follow food safety rules. My favorite thing that we have made is cupcakes and curry. I've also enjoyed doing food, sorry, group projects and working together to solve problems together. After graduation, I plan to go into the medical field. I want to work with cancer patients, and I feel like something that I have learned in culinary that would incorporate in healthcare is to focus on nutrition. I feel like the culinary experience will help you later on in life, because you'll understand how to do certain things in the kitchen, and be able to help teach others about food safety and how to handle your food properly.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hello, my name is Rami Joseph. I'm a senior in Culinary Arts Three. I currently have my Surf Safe certification, and I'm working on my NRFSP certification. In Culinary Arts Three, we learn about college and career advancement opportunities in culinary industry. We practice our cooking and baking techniques, learn about restaurant management, and began participating in Skills USA competitions. If we have not earned our NRFSP or Surf Safe, by the time we reach Culinary Three, we will continue to work on getting those certifications. In my culinary class, I've enjoyed learning the basics of cooking, especially learning the different food temperatures, such as pork and shrimp, which need to be cooked to one forty-five, and chicken, which needs to be cooked to one sixty-five, and learning basic life skills. My favorite thing we have learned to make is West African Chicken Curry, Brownies, and Chicken Alfredo. My future career goals are to be a forensic fire investigator. I have not decided what college I'd like to attend. In culinary class, I've enjoyed cooking, eating, and learning. Some of the things I have learned are the big six pathogens, which is typhoid salmonella, which you can get the typhoid fever from, and non-typhoid, non-typhoid salmonella, which causes gastrointestinal problems, E. coli, norovirus, chyella, and hepatitis A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, nice to meet you all. My name is Joshua Carrick, and I'm a senior in Culinary Arts Four program. I currently hold my Surf Safe and NRFSP certification, and I'm currently working towards my AMSA Food Safety and Science Certification as well. At Culinary Arts Four, we build upon our skills and focus on culinary and hospitality management, advanced baking techniques, and we have the opportunity to participate in advisory lunches, Skills USA, and competitions such as the Stewart Institute Gingerbread House Competition. After graduation, Pine Forest culinary students have the opportunity to continue their education at local colleges and universities such as UWF, Pensacola State College, and Georgetown Technical College. Each of these institutions offer programs in both culinary arts and hospitality. In my culinary class, I have enjoyed collaborating with different people that I normally wouldn't have interacted with in other classes. We also made dishes like Louisiana, like a Louisiana dish called Machu, which is celery, corn pepper, butter, grape juice, and vinegar.
Ooh.
And I wouldn't normally have made that at my own household or by myself. And my favorite thing so far we have made is a homemade gnocchi in creamy marinara sauce, which was really good.
Ooh.
After graduation, I plan to go to UDF to pursue a career and, as a nursing, as a nurse practitioner. Being in the Culinary Academy will help me in my future girl, career goals, because we have learned about the symptoms of foodborne illnesses of toxins, for example, salmonella, tafai, and it's symptom of fatigue, and high fever. My certification has led, made me eligible for the Bright Futures Kate Medallion Scholarship, and the advisory lunches have given me important volunteer hours and work experience. Thank you again.
Thank you.
My name is Clayton Harrell. I'm a graduate from Pine Forest, class of two thousand twenty-three. I've taken all four years of this program while I was in high school. I've also currently still have both my certification. I'm currently enrolled at Pensacola State College for my culinary management degree, on top of being on the board for the Culinary Club there. I'm currently employed at Restaurant Iron Downtown, and my goal is to be a great chef. This program has helped me a lot to work with people that I normally want to have interacted with, on top of learning my skills, it, my bad, interests in this field. Currently, my goals and, from, I'm sorry about that. Currently, my goals are to keep working hard, where I want to achieve my goals, to obtain Michelin stars. But this program has helped me a lot from making friends, to learn how to cook, and also learn how to talk to people, and learn my opportunities to keep more public speaking roles that I can protect to advance my career. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hello again. Today, we've prepared a cream cheese Danish video for you, and I'll explain the process while the video plays. We hope you enjoy your Danishes. So how are y'all been doing?
We've been fine, and we're so excited. We should all hold these up, okay, here we go.
All right, to start off with the cream cheese Danishes, we roll out the dough to one-fourth of an inch thick. Next, we place cold but softened butter on one side and fold it to seal. Then it will be placed on the cooler for twenty minutes to rest. While it's resting, we will make the cream cheese filling, which would consist of egg yolk, flour, powdered sugar, and lemon juice. Then the mixture is then, is cooked over medium heat on a double broiler. Afterwards, we will roll out and fold the dough onto itself multiple times to create almost fifty flaky layers of butter. The thinly rolled dough is then carefully cut, brushed with egg wash, and given the centered cream cheese filling before it's stripped to the oven. And then, after it comes out, you know, a little golden brown, crispy, maybe a little sweet, it will be given a glazed finish to make it that extra warming goodness, to become the beautiful product you have before you today. This program has allowed us to present these pastries in front of you, and present in front of you guys, to kind of conquer our fears of public speaking, and I thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope you enjoyed it, and I know that we did, and thank you again for the opportunity to just showcase all the talent that we have at Pine Forest. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, it was excellent presentation. Love having somebody who has graduated and sharing with us how they're using their skills. Mr. Fesco, do you have anything you wish to say?
I congratulate all of you on entering and attaining the skills that you have thus far, using them, knowing what your goals are, knowing how, even though you may not have a career in your mind in the culinary arts, it will still support things that you'll do in life, like you said, friends and family, making connections, entertaining people that you normally might not be with. A question for the, Mr. Trent, how many students are currently enrolled in the Culinary Arts Program at Pine Forest?
Five hundred right now. We're pretty close to five hundred students.
Wow, awesome. That's, that's great, and I thank you and the teachers for your willingness to work and be there, and I imagine that it's fun. I know that being around energetic students every day can sometimes be tiring, but it definitely is rewarding. So I thank you, I thank you students for coming in and sharing with us what you've done, and what you intend to do, and I wish you all the best in the future.
Mr. Williams?
And I'll just echo what everyone said, very proud of you. Thank you so much for what you're doing in the program, and I work hard to put this weight on, so I need people to continue to be able to cook good meals, so thank you for doing that, and you can bring some pastries around me anytime.
Do either of our, our board member elects have anything they wish to say? We need to have you turn your mic on. Y'all have to get used to this. Mr. Harrell?
I'm so proud of each and every, each and every one of you, and I want to know what day you bake, so I want to be sure that that's the day that I come to Pine Forest. Also, did I hear you say one hundred serfs?
Here we had one hundred serfs, and already this year, we have forty-nine.
That, that deserves a round of applause right there in itself. Thank you and the teachers for what you do, and thank you students. Very obviously have an exemplary program there that you're very proud of, and it makes everyone proud, and it serves our community.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. Mr. Black, thank you so much for what you do day in and day out, to your students. I'll tell you what I was most impressed with, not cheese Danish, but the confidence that each of you displayed, that's going to take you a long way, it's going to make you successful in school, and more importantly, I say this all the time, it's going to provide success in life, so look forward to seeing you again, and I'm very, very proud of you.
Thank y'all so much, and thank you so much for the breakfast for tomorrow morning. And if you wish, did you have anything, Ms. Stanley? Did you want, okay. So you're welcome to stay for the meeting. I will tell you that if you'd like to see how it went, you can go to the website and watch yourselves, and, because all of you did an amazing job. Very, very well done. So, thank you, and you can either stay, or if you have something more exciting to do. Thank you for being here, taking time out of your day. At this time, we will move to our calendar. I don't know how many people are shocked as I am, but it's almost Thanksgiving, and that means Christmas is just around the corner. I will remind our board that tonight, there is the All County Orchestra Concert at The Sanger. It starts at six-thirty. We got to go to the All County Band Concert on Tuesday night, and it was just phenomenal. We have so many talented children in this community, and we're so blessed to have teachers who bring that out of them. Then, on the nineteenth, the installation and organizational meeting for the new board members and the organizational meeting for the board starts at five PM in this room, and the board meeting will start at five-thirty or shortly thereafter, depending on the length of time. Do y'all have any questions about Tuesday night at this time? I know that the superintendent and Ms. Buswell and others have been helping you through that. So, starting on the twenty-fifth, the Monday, we will be out for Thanksgiving break. Anything else in November? Yes, yes, sir.
I just got this information, so I want to make sure, put it on your schedule if you want to attend. November twentieth at Global Learning Academy, their Thanksgiving feast will be from ten o'clock to eleven-thirty. And then there is a fifth grade Thanksgiving musical at Beulah Elementary School on November twenty-first at nine AM. And then, of course, there will, there will be all kinds of things beginning to occur, and I've asked Mr. Wilson to work with our level directors and our principals to try to give us just a list. Then we'll distribute that list to all of you to attend when, when you so desire.
Thank you for that, Mr. Superintendent, because that's always, once the, once you get back from Thanksgiving, then you have opportunities for choral, band, all sorts of performances that are going on, plays, and sometimes, I, usually it's on the Fine Arts Department's website, but sometimes we don't get there, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
A quick question, I guess, mainly Mr. McFarland. I got a notice something on the nineteenth, eleven o'clock.
That's in December.
Oh, that's December. I put the wrong month.
Yeah.
Oh, I was hoping we're going to do Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Well, the nineteenth is your meeting of this month.
Right, but I have eleven o'clock at the Hall Center. I was thinking, oh, they're doing Thanksgiving and Christmas this year. Okay, thank you.
Good question. All right, so there's nothing else in November. I, I know Mr. Williams, or Mr. Fesco, y'all both planning on going to the FSBA Conference? And are two new members planning on attending as well? Good, okay. So moving on to December, the twelfth will be your, the next discussion and agenda review workshop, and then the seventeenth, and then winter break. I was discussing with my students and our mentor how quickly their second, their first semester is ending. Anyone have anything else? Ms. Bregash?
Yes, ma'am. NAS is having their Christmas party for the kids on the eleventh at nine AM.
In December? Okay. Are the school board, are the school board members invited?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't want him to barge in, you know.
And I think Cook Elementary and Sims Elementary.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody needs to get their shopping done? Okay. And when do the students come back after Christmas, Mr. Superintendent?
I think the students come back January seventh. Does that sound right?
That sounds right.
Okay.
Thought I'd throw it out there. Okay, if there's nothing else on the calendar, we will move, do you have a public forum update, Mr. Superintendent?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Moving on, we will go to Mr. Williams, who wants a cellphone update, Mr. Williams?
Yes, I just wanted to hear from the superintendent if he has any information from his committees that he's sent out to the schools, and what, you know, what they found, and just give us an update.
Will do. We were able to, of course, you know, the first visit was just Mr. Strather and myself. We went to Flemington High School. It was very impressive what they had been able to accomplish there. There are about five hundred and twenty students. They have two main entryways that students come into the school. So it was fairly, I won't say easy, but it was easier than some of our sites. You know exactly what I mean. The first four or five weeks of school, the principal and the assistant principal informed us that it was quite strenuous on them. They took all of the responsibility, if a teacher found a student with a cellphone out, they went to the classroom and they dealt with it. But the most positive thing that they talked about, and we were able to witness, was student interaction, conversation, the lunchroom being loud, instead of students looking at their phone. Cody and I had good conversation, both to Flemington and back. We were able to get a group of principals, directors, Mr. Tompkins, Dr. Roberts, assistant principals, deans, Ms., Ms. Watson from procurement also visited, and they ended up going to all three schools in Escambia County, Alabama, WS Neil, Flemington, and Escambia County High School. We, Cody is at our meeting next week, okay, on November the eighteenth, we will all convene, and there'll be really good discussion. I imagine I'll hear pros and cons of things that they have seen when they visited those three sites. But we also know that one of the things that we need to do, and we're working to ensure this occurs, is get to a school that has twelve hundred to eighteen hundred students. So the, the current superintendent in, Dr. Collier, in Escambia County, Alabama, worked for twenty-plus years in Mobile County, and there are several schools over there that use, not necessarily yonder pouches, but they use pouches. And one of the schools actually uses the door pouch. So we're going to work to be able to go over there and see a couple. There was also a re, a really big school in Montgomery that we may be able to go see. So that's where we are right now. I know that some of the principals that went were very interested. They were just concerned about the logistics, you know, kids coming off the bus, car riders, all the different entries that we have at, at some of our schools specifically. I know the last school that I was at, there was like nine different entries for students to come into the school. We have come a long way since when I was at a school, in particular, because We have come a long way since when I was at a school in particular because we had to from a security standpoint. But, we're open-minded, we're continuing to take a look at it. I know that there are, from that very first article, it was kind of a divided issue. But, you know, we're not, I'm not here to win a popularity contest, so if we find out what is going to end up being best and most beneficial for our students, we'll bring that back here and tell you exactly what we believe that to be. And we allow the board to give us the, the marching orders as to what we'll do. But, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell for where we are right now.
Okay, well, I appreciate that because we, we've had a discussion on the Children's Trust concerning this and one of the things I brought up was the community support and the buy-in from the community leaders and, and from what I've heard from that meeting, they're, they're all in on moving forward with that because we know that the youth mental health concerns with the cellphones and the harmful impact of social media that's affecting our students and academic distractions. All of those, well documented by several states in, in, in the United States who've already banned, I believe it's about eight states that have a, have a ban on, on cellphones. So, real interested to see where, where it goes, where we go from there. And then, we just move right into the next, we gotta move right into it?
Well, let me make sure that, yeah, see if anyone else has a question.
Jump in to say that, you know, the cellphone dilemma that we find ourselves in really initiated in the legislature. So, I wonder if we could reach out to our local delegation to say, hey, might you all want to step back and look at something in what you have done to undo? Giving, you know, the, the students have the right to have the phone. Can they word it in such a way as you have a right to have a phone, but you don't have a right to use that phone during instructional time or on school, something. But, but I think that having the legislature on board rather than flying in the face of it, I don't know. Just a thought.
One of the things you mentioned as you were talking about there are states that have already legislated the, the cellphone policies and you might want to ask Ms. Odom to do some research on that so you can present it. Looking at the agenda on the Excellence in Education meeting that's going on, that's where Mr. Adams is. He may come home with some, some ideas because it, it is one of the things that they're, they're talking about is, you know, and it makes things easier if the whole state is charged with the same thing. Ms. Odom?
The current legislation does allow for us to tell students that they cannot have their phone on during instructional time and it also says that a teacher has the authority to tell a student where to put their phone. So, that, some of those elements are already in the legislation. It's just a question of how it gets implemented.
And I think back to what Mr. Leonard was talking about with the leadership in our schools. You know, saying that your cellphone cannot be out and actually being able to monitor it, just like the state of Florida says you can't hold your cellphone while you're driving your car. So, I mean, you know, I think, you know, everything we know about cellphones is that it would be better if they were not at school. But again, you've got to figure out how to go about it so that it's not taking up more time, taking care of infractions rather than teaching. Either of you have a comment on, on that subject at this point? Alright, so, moving on.
Yeah, moving on. And, and also in the near future, I would like to have statistics on, on cellphone referrals and I'm not sure.
Mr. Tompkins has that.
The next one is just the, the idea of having an unplugged day where we just can compile it and see how it works. See if we can have a day where we just say, hey, we're going to try not to use cellphones in this day and see what all of the, what comes from it. And that's, that's what I was thinking when I put this on the agenda.
I'm, I'm glad you put it on there. And actually, after the Children's Trust meeting, I had a conversation with Mr. Strather because we're going to do it and the Superintendent's Council, Student Council. I hope to be able to have them here at the December workshop, give our board members opportunity to meet, meet each one of those students. Really want it to be a student-led endeavor in our schools. But, what Cody and I talked about and it will, this will take some work, but we're not, we're not, we're not allergic to work. Community-wide, find a day. Now, you know, second semester, it's a little bit difficult to try to find a day when it's going to be conducive. But, we will. Let our students tell us what's going to be best at their school. Really, really advertise it, work with the Children's Trust, work with our news media outlets and say, we want to try to do something county-wide. Where you leave these things at home. If you need to call somebody, you pick up the regular old phone, push some buttons. Used to be twirl it, but now push some buttons and call who you need to call. I would just assume unplug from everything. If we're, I asked Sean yesterday, do we have any chalkboards left? We don't have any chalkboards, but we do have grease boards. So, teaching could still occur, good solid teaching. But, yes, sir, that, that's the idea, but we're trying to take it not just to our fifty-two schools and sites, but all across the county. And I think that might help with some of that division we saw earlier on. But, yes, sir. So, hopefully for you to meet the Superintendent's Council at the December workshop. And if, because I may forget, been a rough day. Also, at the December workshop, we're going to work, Ms. Morgan's going to try to secure a choral group for some music. I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. But, thank you for putting it on the agenda, Mr. Williams.
Any, any comments from, okay. Alright, so our next item on the agenda is a discussion about the school board chair and vice chair. And I won't be here to lead that, but I'm hoping that Mr. Williams is the vice, has been my vice chair and that we would consider moving him forward as the chair.
Is it appropriate to say things at this meeting?
Yes, well, with this, we found out, there were, I can go back in history, I've been here too long, that it's better to kind of have a conversation about who, what you're thinking and because one time, there, there was dissension about who might be chair. So, I think it, it's better because that organizational meeting is kind of a, you've got to move forward fast and I think if, if, you know, you want to.
Well, I, I guess I could publicly say that it is my intention to nominate Mr. Williams as the chair for next year.
And it, yeah, and to give the history, you know, Mr. Williams came on and, and, and we jumped over District Three, went to District Four. So, in reality, if we go with past practice, we have no policy, just to be clear on that. It would be District Five that would be vice chair. And you can think about that through Tuesday and just kind of, you know, think about whether you, after a year, you'd be ready to do that.
Well, I, I know that what we did because of COVID and because of some other things, we had Ms. Hightower stay on as chair two years in a row, which really threw things out from going through that numerical transition. And, so, it, it's different than it has been and I don't know what it would take for us to get back there, whether we need to.
Well, I mean, that, that's the thing. I mean, you know, Mr. Harold's been a leader in schools, so he, he obviously knows how to lead meetings. And, so, you know, if you wanted to get back into that.
Right.
Rotation, that would be the easiest way to do it.
And for somebody who's not been on the board before to come in the first year and be chair would be very difficult.
Although they do it in some counties.
Well, they, they might. But, look how good we are compared to other counties.
We hear that all the time, truthfully, people. We really do hear that we run things well here.
And, and so, you know, the idea of being a vice chair is not something that, that would be out of the ordinary.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I'll just use my own experience as a chair, the year that I was. Especially the training at FSBA was very important because they do a, a training just for incoming chairs. And it gave me a lot of insight into how things should operate and how things should be handled. And, and so, having a year to, to do that and be in the process is, is very helpful.
I know Mr. Williams has signed up for that and if, and we could, if Mr. Harold wanted to do that, he could get Elizabeth to sign him up for that, that same workshop. So. Yes, yes, okay. Alright, so, at least you've got a chair in your brain. We, no vote has been taken. Okay, so, that's the last part of this. So, we move on to item three. Before, well, I could do it at one point, but I just want to kind of go ahead and, and in case something happens that Ms. Hart has to run out of the meeting and give a shout out to, to transportation. I happen to have been at Tate High School yesterday and, and realized how disruptive railroad crossing, being worked on can be very disruptive to our, our schools. And, so, I just wanted to have you share with your bus drivers that we appreciate their patience. I mean, I was standing there waiting on my student to come in and, and I saw all the kids coming in and one kid said, I'm just so glad to be at school. So, please share that with them. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, do you have any additions, any comments at this point?
Just, just a couple. Before I start with comments, I want to make certain, I wasn't certain I was going to do this, but when you wanted to make certain that you thanked Darlene and what her team does. What I would like for us to do, because I can tell you that we have some remarkable students and remarkable employees. And today, while every day is a, a tough day, when you've got thirty-seven thousand students, fifty-seven hundred employees and it's just real life. But, what I'm reminded of today is the resiliency of our employees and our students. So, you know, when you, when you put your child on a bus, you want to be sure and you want to have assurances that they're going to be well taken care of and then when they get to school, that their safety is at the forefront of all of our minds. Today, it was exemplified by a bus operator, by several students, by administrators at the school, by administrators within this district. So, before I start with my comments, if we could just take a little bit of time, a brief period of time and close our eyes and go to whoever you go to in prayer. We have a student that is in a very difficult situation and, uh, I think that would be the most appropriate thing for us to do at this current time. So, if you'll just bow your head and say a prayer. Amen. Thank you all. Thank you for that. So, let me go to some things that are of importance. I know this is a little bit old news, but I, I do believe it's critical to make certain that when our schools receive recognition that they so well deserve, we should make sure that our public knows. And sometimes the only way our public knows is if we talk about it while we're here. C I Y, CA Weiss Elementary School is the number-one community school in the state of Florida. Meeting partners involved in that, you know, it's not just our school district, community health, Children's Home Society, hospitals, really working to help us, help that, that school and that neighborhood. The Healthy Schools Initiative has been approved by the Trust. That will be at Global and at Sims Elementary School. Ms. Odom is working through the Memorandum of Understanding, Memorandum of Agreement with United Way of West Florida and Ms. Gilliam. That is going to be a, another program, I shouldn't call it a program. That is going to be an opportunity for the entire community and our students within that community to be able to thrive. Really looking forward to that. And then, just the other night, the National Flight Academy was granted a Children's Trust grant to be able to provide a week-long camp, seven weeks in a row, for students here in Escambia County. I believe we will focus on middle school students. It may go to the high school as well. But, it'll be a five-day camp aboard the ship at the National Flight Academy. The grant covers transportation, it covers food and board and it will be a truly, fully immersive experience for forty to forty-five students each week from our schools. And that, really, Madam Chair, that's, those were the items that I wanted to tell you about today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Anybody have a comment or a question about any of that? Okay. So, moving on to our next item, Committeeing Departmental Reports. We will see those. Oh, and one thing I was going to say when you were talking about the unplugged day, don't forget the, the PTA. Because those are part of the parent structure that might be helpful to get them on board.
Yep.
So, we'll review the agenda. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to this month's agenda?
Yes, and, Mr. Harold, Ms. Pergosh, every once in a while, we're going to have adds and deletes. It's just a history of doing, I mean, it's just a, it, it happens.
It happens.
Historically, it has occurred and it will continue. Under Section Seven, Items Requiring Public Input, we've added Item A, which is the sick leave policy. We've added Item B, which is the adoption of or use of instructional library or reading list materials. Under Section Twenty, which is Finance, we've added, added Item B and Item C. Under Section Twenty-six, Human Resources Ed Support, we deleted Item B and then added Item E. Under Section Forty-one, Superintendent Employee Discipline, we've added Item A and Item B. And then, under Section Forty-five, Internal Auditing, we've added Item B and Item C. That's the additions and deletions.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from three different meetings. Does anybody have any corrections or additions at this point to, give to Ms. DeWes? Okay, we have no unfinished business, no administrative appointments at this time, no items for first reading. And no items for, we do have two for public hearing. As Mr. Superintendent just said, the sick leave policy that was on our agenda prior. Do you have something, Ms. Odom?
I was just going to say, you may recall that there were a few minor provisions that were changed. Those changes have been advertised. It has been in excess of twenty-eight days, so this would be the final adoption.
Yeah, for both of these items?
Yes.
Yes. And, and if you have some questions about either one of them, Ms. Odom's your best source of information. Alright, so, moving on to the consent agenda. I know both of you are familiar with what the consent agenda is. It's the items you can look at as a whole and they'll be voted on in, in one, at one time. Firstly, we have curriculum. Are there any questions or any items that need to be pulled under curriculum? I don't think they were working this month. We have the contract with the amendment with the Pensacola State College Charter. Seeing no questions. Moving on to finance. Thank you, Mr. St. Sierra, for sending the things to look at. Because that means we look at those things you didn't mention, but. Anything from anyone? Okay. Moving on to Human Resources. Is this where you want to ask a question, Mr. Fetsko? Turn your.
I did have a question under 24R.
24R.
The training. Within there, there was some comment about similar to the Bureau of School Improvement. And I wondered, what are the differences between what's going to happen with the Bureau of School Improvement and this contract?
Well, since not here.
I may have to get one of the Level Directors. I want to say this lady has been providing academic support at Sims for several years now, and the contract is with her.
Right. Okay, but in the, and I've read through it, and my question talked about similar to what's happening with Bureau of School Improvement services provided. And I thought, well, if it's the same thing as being provided by the Bureau of School Improvement, Ms. Wilkins, are you the one that might have some information along these lines?
They, Sims is not under Bureau of School Improvement any longer. They came off of that list.
Right. And.
So we don't have any schools that are officially being supported by BSI, except for Warren and Prep at this time. But Kristy Wood, she works with, Mr. Leonard is correct, she's been working there a few years now. She works with kindergarten through second. I'm still supporting Sims, but I focus on third through fifth. So that covers both all grade levels. And Kristy Wood also consults and works with us as a team.
You know what I need to do? I think this may get to where you are, where you're trying to go. I believe that commentary is probably just from the last two years. And when the contract was submitted, that language should have been removed.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, but in light of what Ms. Wilkins just said, it makes even more sense now in that what they're doing is similar to, not in addition to.
Yeah, I can tell you what, all I can do is speak for myself. What we're trying to do, and I love Dr. Rachel Heide, but we're trying not to do business with the Bureau of School Improvement.
Right.
Ever again.
Right.
Okay.
And so I didn't understand from what I read, and maybe it was me not reading it correctly, that I thought that there were both this lady and Bureau of, and it's not. Bureau of School Improvement is out of the picture, but she will continue the same type of service because it's not being provided through them. Thank you.
Elizabeth has it up there if you want to look and see where the, your question was. Was it in the very beginning or?
It was in, yeah, it was back in the summary.
Oh, it's in the summary, okay.
This contract was specifically, Ms. Sanders was, she was pretty excited about this person because they've worked with her before. And so we got this on pretty quickly, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, to get this contract prepared and ready with this individual. And I think Ms. Sanders wanted to get her started ASAP.
Your permission.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to the contract at all. I thought it was a duplication of services. That's why I questioned it, and it's not. That's, I'm good with the contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fetsko. Any other questions on that item? Any other questions under Finance and Procurement? Seeing none, we'll move on to Human Resource.
Wait, 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 yeah.
You have another one?
I had, in 29, I just wanted to.
We hadn't quite gotten there yet.
I asked clarification, and I think I got it from Ms. Cross Tag, that in the report, 29A, the.
The Equal Educational Opportunity Report.
That there are, there really aren't anything, there's nothing of note. We know that we have some things to make up more with Title IX opportunities, but that's, that's it. There's no anything else. Ms. Adams Baker? Thank you. I just wanted that clarification.
Well, it's always interesting when you read through that because it seems like we continually had issues with that particular Title IX. Okay.
Going down to 32.
Okay, there's nothing else under Human Resources? Anyone has a question about? Okay, so moving on to Operations, still these planning. At 32.
I have 32J, a quick question that.
J.
What hurricane repairs were needed in transportation?
If you're familiar with the Bus Barn, we have an area where, at one point, there was a fueling area where the buses came under. The wind got in that and destroyed all of that area under there. And we had to get it redesigned and new lighting and that type of stuff, so.
I was unaware that we had any damage to anything from the storm.
That's from Sally.
I was going to say it was Sally. It takes a while.
Okay.
That's the last of our damage that we're aware of.
I kept thinking, well, they went somewhere else, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, it might be helpful in the future since you're still working on Hurricane Sally to designate that that's the hurricane we're talking about. Okay, anything else under Operations? So moving on to the Superintendent. Items from the Board. Items from the Superintendent and his discipline, any questions? I'm looking, y'all have any questions? Okay, all right, so we move on. There's no items from the Board, no items from the Superintendent. We're moving to Internal Auditing. Does anyone have any questions about Internal Auditing? Because I was going to call, I would call Mr. Bryant up because there's been some news recently. And he and I discussed, maybe it would be a good opportunity to kind of explain the process. So, Mr. Superintendent, you don't, you and I just said that would be okay. Mr. Bryant?
We go from hurricanes to internal auditing.
Yes. And we're so grateful to have you in our district. I mean, you're the FEMA guru. You know everything and y'all need to know that. What was our last, our last check came in like 20?
Oh, we, like you said, Hurricane Sally, we deal with it every day.
Okay.
So as you mentioned, there's been some, some things in the news about a particular location that struggled. And I thought it was probably a good idea, especially considering this is the month that we bring all of our school audits to the Board, to talk about the process for the internal audits for the schools. So as you're aware, schools have a set of funding at their schools, that is, their, their funding that they generate, and then they also have district funds. We focus on the funds they generate. And so there's two types of audits that you can do. One's a financial audit. That's really where you're just taking what the school says that they have in their accounts. You're looking at their bank reconciliations. You're independently confirming those balances with the bank. You're looking at their financials at the end of the year and doing some very limited testing. And then there's the compliance side. And for the compliance side, we do those schools on a rotating basis. Our elementary schools and our middle schools get done every three years, except for our larger middle schools. Ransom Bailey, they'll, they're on a two-year cycle. All of our high schools are on a two-year cycle as well. And so you'll have schools that you do compliance for and financial, and then schools that do financial. And then we combine all that information into a district-wide report. And in that district-wide report, that's the issues that we saw at a number of schools. And what those are is they represent an opportunity for the district to maybe do training, to revise policies. For instance, if you see that, that we do 23 compliance audits, and at eight of those compliance audits, we saw an issue related to fundraising forms. That's an opportunity for the district to maybe do more training on fundraising forms. And the district does a lot of training. They, the person, they actually have someone in Finance that oversees the school's internal accounts. That person issues weekly emails on topics, and we work very closely with that person. And they, they'll do the weekly emails, and then also do, every month or so, they'll do trainings on a specific topic where bookkeepers and secretaries can come and do those trainings. So you have those two types of audits. When it comes to what we do for compliance, we, we pull a sample, a statistical sample of transactions. It tells us, we feed it into the system, and it says you had this many checks. And so if you pull this many number of checks and test those checks, any issue that you find in that sample is going to be representative of your population. And so we do that for receipts and deposits and dispersments, checks, credit cards, journal entries, you name it. We do it for all of that. And then there's all these minor areas that we also test, everything from fundraisers to gift cards, you name it, we test it. There's, there's no doubt that a bookkeeper at an individual school has lots of responsibilities and lots of things that they're responsible for. And so when you think of a bookkeeper, they receive money from teachers, they record that money, they reconcile that money, they take that to the bank, and they also, they also do the reports for that. So that's a lot of duties that are assigned to one person. So there's been concerns about segregation of duties in the past. And I will say that there is, there's very rarely much you can audit out to find fraud, especially when someone gets very, very creative. But the district has designed some processes that help serve as a check and balance on the fact that this one person has so much power. One is every month, the principal has to approve every purchase. And then every month, reports get printed and the principal signs off on that. Now, I think to be fair, principals have a lot of responsibilities. And it's very easy to say, well, you signed off on that report, Mr. Principal and Mrs. Principal. Yeah, I mean, that's one of 100 things that a principal does in a day. And you have to have faith in your staff to be able to do those things. But there are some other checks and balances. One of the major things that the district has implemented is every single month, the bookkeeper has to print out a copy of every sponsor's account, the detailed transactions of their account. And so now imagine that at a high school for SGA and Spanish Club and volleyball and track. So, you know, it could be 100 reports. They print those reports out, they send them to the teachers, and the teachers have to sign a log saying, I have reviewed my account and everything appears to be accurate. And then they sign that log. And so that log gets uploaded to the district financial system every single month. And so there shouldn't be any surprises when someone comes to their account. And then, as part of one of our audit processes, we bypass the bookkeeper. We go in and we randomly select some accounts and we contact the teachers directly. And we say, can you please verify that this is your initials? And can you please verify that you did indeed receive the detailed account history of your account and that you reviewed it? And, you know, I don't know how much we want to talk about an individual school, but those same processes occur for all of our schools. And it occurred for the school in question. And so when you, you know, I know there's been some concern about maybe how long certain things have gone on. You know, when you, when you have those sort of steps and you've not necessarily encountered those problems, I think, no one will really know how long certain things have gone on, but I think there is a comfort factor there. One of the things that, because I read the various press articles, and one of the things that I really discourage people from doing is looking at a list of numbers of saying, well, this is what receipts were this year, and this is what receipts were this year, and looking at it and seeing that it goes down, and then trying to draw inferences off of that set of numbers. And then kind of including a statement that says, well, there's no telling how much money's been missing since this person started. I think that it's really dangerous to do something like that because I think that you have to look at those numbers in context. That you look at a school that, whose receipts may have dropped 30% in a year, well, one, you have to know the activity of that school, and then you have to look at that in comparison to what was going on in our environment and what was going on with other schools. I've done the analysis of the receipts for this particular school. And yes, they've gone up and down, but no more than any of the other middle schools and no more than the district at the time. I think it's really easy to say, well, receipts went down 50% from 2020 to 2021. COVID, all of our schools, district-wide, 45% was down. I think this particular school might have been down 30%. No necessary, or no reason for suspicion or concern at the time. And so I think that's what you have to keep in mind when you look at a particular article that may make that comment. We have lots of robust processes in place to try to catch these things, but you're never going to be able to fight creativity. If someone falsifies documents and provides those documents to people and people think they're seeing the correct thing and they're not, there's not much you can do about that. You know, every time you put one more process in place, someone is going to find a way to get around those processes. That's how it is. It's always creative. We always say that our goal is for us, for you, not to get to us the same way you got to us in the past. But you can kind of process your place, you know, put so many processes in place that you really can't do your job. If you have to have 50 people sign off on a check, well, all you're going to do all day is get checks signed off on. So I think that the Board should be comfortable, you know, in, in one of our, in the district-wide report, we put a note about the particular school in there. We're all concerned about the, the image that it projects when we have a, an issue like this that occurs at a school. And, you know, it's happened in the past. We see it predominantly with booster clubs, but you will see this inside school internal accounts. I get asked a lot, well, why does, why does the school district need an internal auditing department? I'm like, well, you know, we have 7,500 employees. And not everybody is as honest as everybody in this room. And so you're going to encounter those scenarios and you just deal with them and you try to learn from it and you move on. But the, the one thing that I can say is while that, the sort of activity that occurred at that school is obviously material to that school and the students that suffer from that activity, it's not necessarily financially material to the district's overall financial statements. But we will, you work with the finance folks to try to see, all right, where did the process potentially break down? Is there anything else we can do? The district's already implemented an additional procedure at the school to have the principal sign off every single day on the receipts. And that's what you do. And, you know, hopefully that catches it until somebody gets creative next time.
Mr. Fetsko, did you want to follow up? I know you were going to ask the question about.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with what you've explained and what you've said. And there are opportunities for people to take advantage of situations, and we'll never be able to, you know, outguess them ahead of time. So if we catch them at the end and get restitution, that's all we can hope for in some cases. So I thank you for the work that you do in that department.
And as I was reading through them, I kind of harken back to when I first got on the school board, and I was always kind of a little disturbed when there were findings at a school and we had no response from the leadership. Mr. Superintendent?
I want to say, on all the financial audits, we did end up with a response from those who had findings. But David, I do know in one of the inventory, I should say, five of the inventory audits, we had four, I think I have these numbers right, four private schools that received federal dispersments from us that did not respond back to, you know, what they're going to try to do to correct, keeping up with their things. But I know that there was one school that I'm responsible for that did not respond. I take full responsibility for that and it will not happen again.
Yeah, I think that that's a very isolated incident. And so, you know, I don't think that that should necessarily give anyone a call for alarm. Almost all of our schools will respond to our audits. We tell them, look, we give you an opportunity to respond. If you choose not to take advantage of that, there is an expectation from district leadership in the school board that you will respond. Um, but it's a little more challenging when you have private schools.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, you know, it, I, I can't hold Ms. Morgan over someone's head, you know, whereas, you know, or the superintendent to say, "You know, I can go this, this next level." Um, and that's why we put the, our attempts to correspond with someone in there to say, "All right, well, we'd like your response." Hey, just, "Are you going to respond?" And FYI, it's going to go to the board if you don't respond. And, and when you don't hear from someone and you don't get responses to your phone calls, um, there comes a point, we got to move forward.
Yep.
And so, uh, we put that in there. But almost always, our schools respond, especially to the internal accounts audits. Um, they always, and our level directors are pretty good about going through there. Uh, I would venture to guess that half of the, the principal's responses get sent back to them by the level directors to say, "We'd like for you to do a little more here." Um, so, there is an effort there.
Well, I want to commend the, the, the school district, because it used to be, "We'll do better next time." That was basically, uh, but now there's little more. This is what we intend to do. I will sit down with this person, and we will do this. And one thing that I have to always remind myself is, we have new people going into new positions constantly, and I so appreciate finance and internal auditing and everyone else working together to help get those people up to speed as quickly as they can, because, um, they're, most people in our district wear multiple hats at any, only, at any given moment. So, um, thank you for that.
That's all right.
Yes.
Take another shot at this. Um, I appreciate it, too. I, I know that through the years I've seen, especially with the inventory audits, that the, the number of items that are not accounted for has gone down and gone down. Every once in a while, you find a school that has, that has things that are kind of, "Hmm, what's going on here?" But I also know this. I know that the next year, items are found from the previous year that were in somebody's back closet, and there it came. Nobody thought to look there. Uh, I, we don't, it does not appear that we have any kind of wholesale or, uh, people running off with, you know, thousands of dollars in technology. But, uh, a- and I appreciate that the, that they have come down. I'm going to ask a favor, and this changes a little bit. Going through fifty-nine reports at one, in one agenda, it can be, uh...
Taunting.
Yeah, it will. Cause a lot of, no do's having to be taken. Um, i- if indeed the, uh, uh, internal auditing does reports and does, would feed us ten at a time or fifteen at a time would be helpful, but it doesn't have to be. If it, if it causes more work for your department, then I withdraw that. But if it doesn't, it might be an easier bite rather than taking the elephant all at once.
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit of, um, laziness on my part, that, you know, I send them once a quarter instead of once every month, because, you know, there is effort required in doing an agenda, but we can do that. Um, we do have kind of cycles where these things come. You know, we'll do our school audits from July till October, November, and there's no inventories that occur there. And so, then what you'll get is, um, everything that was left over from the end of the year. Like, you'll see a lot of these are all twenty-three, twenty-four audits. That's everything that the, the schools kind of finally got around to, um, or the, the cost centers finally got around to, um, finding everything. And so, then, the minute we're done with our school audits, we'll put down those inventories. So, you may always see kind of November being large, uh, but in the future, we'll kind of spread them out for you. There are, I think, a hundred and seventy-plus cost centers that we do. So, um, so, yeah, we, we can definitely spread those out. I did want to go back to your, uh, your comment about the, the number of assets that get found. I think that, that number's a large amount. You know, I think on this one, we had a hundred and forty assets that we couldn't find, but we lo- located twenty-eight from previous years. And you were right. I mean, someone opens up a cabinet, or a teacher retires, and they clean out a, a file drawer, and like, "There's that iPad." Um, and so, we have stuff on here, I think, that the board wrote off in like two thousand nineteen or eighteen. It's, you, you just never know what you're going to find.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions? Mr. Saints here.
Uh, just, let me add to the, uh, discussion on the school internal accounts. Several years ago, we implemented a cashless online pay platform for the parents. The parents can go online and, uh, make payments for various club activities or whatever the school uses it for. The school has to use it, and if, and some are and some aren't. Um, so, uh, the goal is always no cash, not to have any cash. But that's not going to always occur. We've got lunch money issues, and we, you know, various little small amounts that, uh, students may be having some sort of little fundraiser or something. But for the big stuff, or anything other than small, it is available for the schools to go cashless on, on many of these things that they're doing. So, we're pushing that a little more than we have been. It's been implemented for several years, but the schools have to use it. And so, that is a point of emphasis now. We've already no- located or, uh, notified that school that they need to go ahead and start looking at getting that in place, and we'll, uh, move forward a little bit more aggressively down the road on that.
Any, anything else on that item? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Patty, I would like to say...
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry.
I'd just like to say thank you very much, um, for Superintendent Saints here, to Bryant as well, because this gives assurance to our taxpayers, uh, the money that we have as a district is being utilized correctly. So, thank you very much, um, great work. Thank you.
Um, that's, uh, anything else under auditing? No? Uh, moving, we have no items from the general counsel. I have no forms for public forum. Um, I would like to say, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege that I started to do Tuesday night. Um, and I've written some things out, as this is my last board meeting. Um, yes. Um, and I, you know, I've had a lot of people worry about what, how this was going to happen and how, how it was going to feel, but we've got two amazing people coming on board. Um, I have been both humbled and honored to have served the children, the citizens of our community for the past twenty years. It's hard to believe it's been twenty years, but when I think back to some of the things that have happened since I came on the board, maybe it's longer. Um, but it's been my pleasure to work with four superintendents and their dedicated staff members, and thirteen different school board members, who always put children first. And though we didn't always agree on the best method to do that, I commend my fellow board members for their professionalism, professionalism in being able to disagree agreeably. My greatest wishes I leave is that this board, and those who will sit in the district four and five seats, will continue to always put our students' needs first. Always ask, "Is it good for the children?" before you make any decision. Want to thank Mr. Leonard and his team. You created, um, to make each day at East, at a Scambie County Public Schools a better place for our students to attain their full potential. I've made so many friends, um, and I'm truly going to miss working with each and every one of you. As I close, I would need to thank my husband, who's not here, but he might watch it, and my family, who took time to listen to my grievances and my frustrations, and gave me advice and helped me through with their support through that past twenty years. I thank Elizabeth Buswell. My second brain. And my technology helper. Thank you to Ms. Odom, and to Lenea, and to David Bryant, who have always given me great legal and financial advice, not always just at district level. Law, the law always at di- district, but sometimes you could ask David, think about insurance and stuff, and he'd know the answers. But, and all their staffers in their offices. Finally, keep up the excellent work, Mr. Struthers. Continue to let people know how great our education system is, and what we're doing to better prepare all of our students for their life and their goals, and provide workforce for our community. Though I'll not be here, I will be watching. Thank you. And I promised Mr. Harold an opportunity to speak. Am I going?
We'll get behind you this. I want to commend you for your years of service to the board personally. I've known you a long time. Matter of fact, a few moments ago, I told her, I said, "I received a lifetime membership in the PTA. Do you know who signed that?" And, of course, it was Ms. Hightower. And I said, "I'm not going to tell how many years ago that was." But anyway, uh, thank you for your service. I'm sorry that Mr. Sladen is here, because I wanted to personally thank him for his service, and, uh, I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
The other thing that I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank the superintendent, okay? Uh, I don't know if other districts are doing this or not, but we do it here, and I think, I think that it's because of Mr. Leonard, the onboarding process. I've had the privilege to meet with all four assistant superintendents and all of their directors, gained a lot of insight, but one of the things that I learned the most was we have an amazing team here in our district. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, okay? The third thing, wasn't it exciting to see sixty-eight percent of the people voted for the sale, half-cent sales tax? I mean, you know what that says? That says that the people in this county trust us, you know? That's what it says. It's, they ride around this district, they see all of the things, uh, that has come from that half-cent sales tax, and they see that it has been used properly. And that's so important, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I know the committee has done an amazing job. Everywhere I went in District Five, I talked that up. And of course, there's always some of the naysayers out there with this, and I was able to turn some of them around, you know, because, uh, I said, "Look, this is a new facility in your area here," you know? "And this came from half-cent sales tax." But, uh, my wife and I were looking at that, uh, the night of the election, and when they did the first dump, I said, "It's over with. It's over with." But everyone who was involved in that, everyone, I'm sure all of you went out and spoke on that. What an amazing night it was, and, and what an amazing plus, plus, plus for our district. Thank you, Ms. Hightower.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Anything else? There's nothing else for the, of Mr. Leonard?
No, we, we're going to say something about you.
Okay.
You can't get out of here without saying something. But no, I just want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your, your, um, counsel and all of your wisdom that you provided me through all the years, even when I was at Pensacola High School, and, and what you've done for our children. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll keep your legacy alive here, and thank you for all your service. And, uh, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
And, and I want to publicly thank you, too, Ms. Hightower. Been working with you a long time. Um, I almost got you where I wanted you, and now you're going to... I, I have learned so much from you, and we, you and I have not always agreed on issues, but we have always cherished and believed in each other. And I told you this before, and I'll say it again, I will definitely miss you, but I know where to find you. And, and, and I thank you. I don't know of anyone who has given so much through the years as you have from PTA and every other thing that you've done for children in the Scambia County. It has been a pleasure, an honor, a privilege, and it's heartfelt that I've had the opportunity to get to know you and work with you and be a part of the, the life that you've made for so many kids. I love you. You take care.
All right. Because I've learned this from Mrs. Hightower, one of the things, this is a little bit of business, okay? And then I'll, I'll, I'll get to what I want to say to Mrs. Hightower. So, for the installation and organization meeting, I would want to make sure I go through it for all of us that'll be here, so make sure that we're going to do this correctly. Um, we'll have the invocation and the pledge. If it's okay with the board, I'll do the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Um, then we're going to install Ms. Burgash. You'll have your guests. They'll have a script. You, you, you know I stutter, so a script will help me not stutter. We'll make sure we get all your guests introduced, and then we'll have you installed. You'll do the oath. Uh, then, Mr. Harold, we'll do the same thing with you. I think we have planned for both of you and your family to be in the front row, so you'll have at least ten to twelve seats on the front row. Um, and then, if we have to, we can re- reserve back behind that as well. Once the two new board members have been installed, that's when we'll do the chair. Uh, we'll open the floor for nominations. I'm hearing today that we'll have a, one person make that nomination, and then we'll close the floor for those nominations. Uh, we'll elect the chair, then we'll do the same thing for the vice chair, and then we'll have the vice chair. And then we're going to do a designation of date, time, and location of regular monthly workshop and meeting. I will tell you, I talked to our current chair. She's very happy with what we've done with just the two meetings. I talked to our staff yesterday. They are very, very happy with what we do with our two meetings. I feel like we get a lot of work done and have good conversation, and then make good solid decisions at that Tuesday night meeting. Then we'll appoint, I would assume, Ms. Odom to be our parliamentarian. And, um, there is two different types of parliamentary procedure. It is our hope that you will, uh, select Robert's Rules of Order and not the one that's from Canada. Isn't that correct? And there one, and one's from Canada. Is everybody comfortable with the activity that will occur Tuesday night?
Um, one thing that you and I talked about is giving the new board members an opportunity to speak after they're installed, or, or either you can let them get, install them both, and then give them an opportunity to speak so that they can thank their supporters and those people that are here.
How would you two prefer for that to occur? Would you like to occur right after your installation? You take your time?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do, then, um...
It would mean us going up and coming back, so right after we do our installation.
Yep, that'll be fine.
I, I want to talk from the floor, rather than...
That's what we'll do. Um, I'm glad we did that. And then, we'll take a little bit of time after the installation to get things set up here, and then, uh, whoop, Mr. Williams, we'll go straight into the leasing corporation. That, that'll be where you take on that. I wanted to make sure I said that. And then, I'm going to be short and sweet. I'm going to, I'm going to give you six words, Ms. Hightower. And, uh, three of them are real, real easy for me, and three of them are a little more difficult. But, "We love you, and roll tide, roll."
Ms. Hightower, can I say a few things? I would also like to publicly thank you for your help throughout the years, and me being a school liaison and the now school board member. I thank you so much for your expertise, your experience, and your guidance. And I have big shoes to fill.
You can do it.
Glad you.
Thank you. Okay. There's nothing else? We are adjourned.